All right, you guys.
We're good to go?
Yep.
The regular meeting in the Everett School Committee for Monday, October 18th to 28th, Monday, in regular, ordinary time is to come to order. Can I have a roll call vote, Mr. Roll Call, please, Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Barros.
Present.
Mr. Barros. Ms. Cardelo. Mayor Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. La Monica.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Panarisi.
Yeah.
Ms. Sarni. Chairman Parker.
Present. And can we, for the record, also recognize student rep Dana Lewis? Okay, so we have nine members present. We do have a quorum. Ms. Cynthia Sarni is recuperating from surgery still and will not be in attendance. She sends her regards. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all members live in this location, which happens to be at the high school library. There are no members participating remotely, so therefore, we do not have to do a roll call vote for every item that's being presented on the agenda tonight. With that, Roman numeral three, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, so Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from October 4th, 2021.
Move to waive the reading and place on file.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second to waive the reading and place on file. Any comments, debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, motion carries. Next item, please, Madam Superintendent.
Roman numeral four is public comment.
Move to open public comment.
My second.
Okay, motion is made in second to open public comment. Any questions, comments on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have opened public comment. Mr. O'Connor, is there anybody who has called in to participate?
Nobody has called in, Chairman Parker. We do have somebody here with us who would like to participate.
Okay, so you're welcome for your comment. If you could just introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ben Murray. I am a parent in Everett and a member of the Everett Teachers' Association, a working educator here. I just wanted to attend tonight and make comment about the recent difficulties the school system is going through. I've seen a lot of finger pointing and a lot of blame going around, and I just wanted to speak out against that. I don't feel this is a time for us to be blaming each other. It's hard on all of us. It's hard on teachers. It's hard on administrators, and most importantly, it's hard on students. And so, for the public discourse around it to be used as a political cudgel during an election year, or to cast any group as the main group who deserves blame in something like this is a waste of our time. It's a waste of the children's time. It's a waste of our resources. This is a time to collaborate. It's a time to cooperate. It's a time for us to work together as a unit to best serve our children. That's the only, the only point of all this. All the rest of it is noise. So I'm just here to call on the school committee and on my fellow educators to work towards what our real goal always is, which is to best educate and support Everett's children. This is going on all over the country. Nationally, schools are suffering, employee shortages, schools are suffering, difficult times with students' emotional health, difficult times with educators' emotional health, administrators' emotional health, so on and so forth. So I'd just like to be a voice as a parent and as an educator. I like to say that I'm willing to listen, that I'm willing to collaborate, that I'm willing to put my best foot forward, and to work to support our children. And, you know, I'm not naive, and I know that, I'm sure there are individuals that deserve blame here or there behind closed doors, but the public finger pointing and so forth that has happened and is sure to come is nothing but disappointment and nothing but a waste of time. I appreciate you hearing me out. I am a proud educator and a proud parent in the city, and I look forward to rolling up our sleeves and getting to work together. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I know. I got this.
I'll keep a lookout.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, for your time. Anybody else for public comment in the room? Add that one more time. Anybody else for public comment, whether calling or in the room? Okay, seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, your pleasure.
Make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second to close public comment. Any questions, comments on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, you have closed public comment. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to Roman numeral five, starting with item number one, which is the superintendent's update. Sorry, just bear with us for just a moment. All right, thank you. All right, so good evening to all of you, Chairman Parker, school committee members, and everyone at home. Before we begin, I did just want to let you know I was having a conversation with one of our school committee members today. I know a lot of you are Red Sox fans, and you're hoping to catch some of tonight's playoff game versus Houston. The game starts at around 8:10 p.m. I think you may have a fighting chance of getting to the last inning, the eighth inning, maybe, but we do have a very packed agenda tonight. So tonight's report features a wide range of topics, including STEM Week, which began today, and will continue in our schools and classrooms through Friday. We will talk a little about the EHS debate team, a library survey we're sharing with our families, a grant we received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and we will announce several teacher accolades as well, and student accolades, actually. I will provide updates about the new location of our Parent Information Center and our continued efforts to ramp up our rapid testing throughout the district and our upcoming homecoming festivities. And finally, we will be continuing our School Spotlight series with the Devon School Principal, Dr. Brian Wallace, and Assistant Principal, Dr. Brittany Puleo, this evening as well. I would respectfully request that we take item number two collectively with item number one, as I have included the enrollment numbers in my update.
Second.
Okay, so motion is made in second to take item number two collectively with number one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Madam Superintendent, take collectively.
Thank you so much. So the first event of this evening is inviting one of our amazing students, Mercy Bocchway, to discuss the work that she is doing around Mental Health Awareness Week and the YDE, or Youth Disability Empowerment Club. You may actually recognize Mercy's name from our last school committee meeting, when Ms. Lambert submitted a piece to announce and recognize Mercy, who was recently awarded the Human Armstrong Award. So I respectfully ask the committee to invite up Mercy to speak more about Health Awareness Week, the Youth Disability Empowerment Club, and even tell us a little bit about the award that she just received. And I would also ask that, because I know she has school tomorrow morning, that we immediately follow her presentation with any questions, and if you could type them into the chat, we would really appreciate it.
So moved.
Hi, thank you for the introduction. So the award was a national award, and it was sponsored by the APD to give students with disabilities their own awards, because we typically do not get awards because of the privilege that other students have. So my idea for YDE was that students with disabilities get their own club, and they get to build a community that relates to students with disabilities, and have basically a mentor to relate to. And right now, I am doing Disability History Month, and it's in October, so we are currently doing a mental health awareness day for YDE, so we can talk about mental health, we can talk about mental disabilities, we can talk about how it affects us, we can talk about how the pandemic has affected students' social, emotional health, and how the pandemic had maybe caused eating disorders, and other disabilities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mercy.
I just wanted to compliment Mercy on everything she's doing, and just very proud of you to come up here and give public testimony before the community on your efforts. And now, just very happy to see you here tonight, and congratulations to you. And again, just very proud of you being here and bringing attention to this, to this, you know, this cause. So again, thank you.
Okay, the next question is from Ms. Lambert. If you would like to read it, please.
Mercy, I just was hoping to ask, you know, a lot of the club talks about self advocacy and what true inclusion looks like. If you could expand on that for, especially you're in a room full of policymakers and broadcasting to, you know, school district, how can we help support yourself and your student peers, as well as those younger students that haven't necessarily found their voice, but I think with mentors like you, they will.
Of course. So self advocacy is really important, especially when you have a disability. You have to always advocate for yourself in terms of your accommodations and certain things that you need. And sometimes, sometimes students aren't given education on that and how to ask for what they need. And we need to educate these students on self advocacy and making sure to include them in education, and making sure that we're not just pushing them to the side or segregating them, that we're also including them, and being, and also making sure that they know what they need, and making sure that they understand what they need, they understand why they need it, and they understand what they can do to get it.
Ms. Cardelo?
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mercy, welcome here tonight. So proud to meet you. You are very impressive, and you are truly a mentor. We need a lot of people like you in our district, but throughout the world. I say that it's a wonderful thing. This advocacy is so needed. I have noticed, I have a grandson that's in grammar school, and I take care of him and bring him to and from school and play after school with his friends. I have noticed this year, so many of our young students needing mental health help wasn't recognized in the past. That is due to COVID is now coming out, even though we've been in school for a month and a half, two months. It's starting to show. Made up illnesses, crying, not wanting to go into school, doing different things even physically to themselves, causing pain or infections by picking or chewing their nails, whatever. It's so necessary. And my heart breaks on a daily basis when a parent comes up to me in the schoolyard or calls me and said, "My child is acting very strange, and it's never been like this before." And I do refer them to the guidance counselor and the principals to set them up with therapy in school, and a lot of people have done that. And I've never known it to be like this in the lower grades, as it is this year. So I thank you, because the awareness is so important, because you never want anybody to feel that they stand out, or they're different, or they'll be unaccepted, because they need some help to get through things. And you certainly are, and just an amazing role model, and I thank you, and pray that you just continue to do what you do, and that through your efforts, more people will do what you're doing. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cardelo. Sorry about that. Mrs. Murray.
Hi, Mercy, and thank you for being here. Hold on. Thank you for being here. And also, congratulations on an honor that you absolutely earned, and you deserve every second of every accolade you get. I was wondering if you, in the spirit of advocacy, might be willing to talk about the additional hurdles that the deaf and hearing impaired community have faced through COVID and masking and Zoom? Because I know with my own hearing impaired students, COVID and Zoom and masking has been particularly difficult, and that my students who have hearing issues are facing struggles that a lot of us in the hearing population don't even realize are an issue or take for granted. So I was wondering if you'd be willing to talk about that a little bit. And thank you.
Of course. Initially, well, first of all, I have hearing loss, so like, hearing is hard for me, but I lip read, so, but with the mask, it's harder. It's way harder than without the mask. And during, during the start of the pandemic, it was hard to get used to, used to the masks, because I could no longer, I could no longer talk to my friends. I could no longer go out with my friends anymore. And also, also, I had to, I had to find a way to be able to expand my listening, but it was difficult, and it was very hard for me to be able to hear with a mask on. And before, I had to lip read to understand people. And also, a lot of, a lot of the time, people think that, that just speaking up is gonna help, but no, no. Like, I need to lip read. I need to see, I need to see your facial expression in order to understand you.
Thank you so much, Mercy.
Any other questions of our guests? Okay. Mercy, thank you so much. I believe you were just one of six award winners nationally, nationally.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you don't have any more questions or comments of this amazing young lady, could we excuse you? What a customary thanks. Okay, motion is made in secondary. Thank you for appearing, and I think we'll be seeing you again. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved, motion carries.
Thank you, Mercy.
Thank you so much. So to continue to highlight our amazing students and educators and all of the wonderful things they're doing, today marked the start of the 2021 Massachusetts STEM Week, and our EPS schools, teachers, and students have been active participants. Our first-year K-8 STEM Director, Rupi Kar, put together a vibrant schedule of activities for our K-8 teachers. And also a shout out to EHS STEM Coordinator, Diane Perito, for organizing our events at the high school level. So the week has gotten off to a great start. We actually had the pleasure of welcoming Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito to the Kavarian School today, where she joined EPS and city leaders on a tour of our classrooms to get a real sense of the dynamic activities and projects that make up our STEM Week. So my thank you to the students and teachers. They did a great job today showcasing their work to our distinguished guests and to the Kavarian School for being such gracious and well organized hosts. The Bay State STEM Week is organized by the Executive Office of Education and the STEM Advisory Council in partnership with the state's nine regional STEM networks, of which we are a member of the Metro North Grouping. So now, in its fourth year, STEM Week is intended to boost interest and awareness among all our learners in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The 2021 theme is "See Yourself in STEM." An emphasis is being placed on the power of mentoring and the role it can play in helping women, people of color, first-generation students, low-income individuals, English learners, and people with disabilities to develop their STEM interests and skills. So we are utilizing three engineering design challenges for educators and students created by the Museum of Sciences Award-winning pre-K through eight engineering program, EIE. The challenges are broken into three grade groups, pre-K to two, three to five, and six to eight. So students in grades three through 12 can participate in the CoderX Challenge, in which students, sorry, yes, three through 12, are virtually placed in an Amazon fulfillment center and asked to solve real-world problems and get packages to customers using coding and robotics. Middle and high school students can participate in a BioBuilder Challenge centered around bioengineering and genetics. This is called CellCraft, and the challenge asks students what they can build with biology, a new kind of food, a sustainable fuel, a personalized medicine, so students learn from scientific researchers about the tools and techniques to reprogram cells with DNA. And then they put those tools to work and propose a bio design to meet a local or global need. For fourth through eighth graders, there's a design challenge called the Hurricane Hero Storm City, Massachusetts. You know, with apologies, of course, to those who do experience basement flooding, this challenge requires our students to imagine that a category six hurricane has flooded Massachusetts City with 14 inches of water, and our student engineers are finding a way to evacuate people to safety and move floodwaters out of homes and businesses without electricity. So finally, the Kids in Tech STEM Challenge helps students visualize the concepts of artificial intelligence, understand how these systems affect the way our world works, and appreciate the potential they have to change the future. Students utilize two online platforms, machine learning for kids and Scratch, through which they complete engaging activities that allow them to see what is possible with AI concepts and technology. We've also planned readings for our youngest students featuring books like Dress Like a Scientist Day and Dozens of Donuts. Dress Like a Scientist Day underscores the fact that not all scientists wear white coats and/or work in labs, and Dozens of Donuts introduces math concepts related to the theme of sharing. So we look forward to continuing with STEM Week for the remainder of this week. It is my pleasure to announce that EHS Computer Science and Special Education Teacher Neil Plotnik has been awarded our first ever Everett Educator Innovation Scholarship. So the Everett Public Schools launched the Everett Educator Professional Development Scholarship to fund the creativity, growth mindset, and exploration of our teachers who seek a dynamic training experience that will impact their instruction and impact student outcomes. So for this first ever scholarship opportunity, Mr. Plotnik submitted a thorough, compelling, and thoughtful application, seeking to attend the Computer Science Teachers Association Annual Conference in July of '22 in Chicago. So Mr. Plotnik is a CSTA member, who has actually presented at this national conference in the past, and in addition, he has leveraged the relationships he has formed through his CTSA affiliation to the great benefit of our students. So we have no doubt that he will return from Chicago with great ideas on how to bring computational practices to all content areas, and to promote diversity and inclusivity in our technology classes and programming. And we are excited to continue this Everett Innovation Scholarship in the upcoming years to again encourage the creativity and innovation of our educators. The Boston Debate League offers programs for students in greater Boston with a commitment to serving students of color and other students who have been denied these educational opportunities. It tailors its programs directly to address the educational inequities they experience and strives to create inclusive learning communities where all participants are welcome and supported in achieving transformative lifelong benefits of debate. So we're very excited to have brought them here to Everett to host our first ever Spanish debate team. So they will be holding their debates in Spanish. At EHS, we are pleased to offer a team for students whose home language is Spanish and/or are bilingual. So the team is coached by teachers Ruth Cardona Suarez and Anastasia Cola Keithis. Currently, the 19-member team is hard at work preparing for its October 22 Boston Debate League scrimmage, and the topic for all Boston Debate League events are focused on the privatization of water systems in the United States. The season runs until the end of March, so hopefully everybody will get an opportunity to watch them at some point. The team features students who are enrolled in Spanish II Honors, AP Spanish, and AP Literature, as well as recent arrivals to our district and English learners. Interested students should reach out to the coaches, because it is not too late to join the team for anyone who's interested to be able to take part in something that builds community and camaraderie and critical thinking skills. Practices are every Monday after school in room 3730 at the high school. And best of luck to our students, as they debate the merits and drawbacks of privatization of water systems this upcoming Friday. This slide features photos from Horses Over America that was held on October 7th, so thanks to the organization's founder, retired U.S. Army Lieutenant Colonel Jerry Scott, as well as Everett Police Chief Steve Maisy and the city of Everett for bringing this creative program to our students. So Lieutenant Colonel Scott founded this nonprofit organization last year in response to COVID-related mental health anguish. Lieutenant Colonel Scott believes that spending time with horses has social and emotional benefits similar to those provided by support animals, and research does show that engaging with animals can have a real impact on elevating people's moods, lowering blood pressure, and decreasing anxiety. And based on the response of our many students to Lieutenant Colonel Scott's horse Hercules, I think that assessment was spot on. If anyone is interested in learning more about Horses Over America, I encourage you to visit its website for interesting background information, links to articles, photos, and other exciting information they have on this program. And hopefully, we will also be seeing Hercules again in the not-too-distant future. I have heard that they will be visiting us in the coming months. So we held our EL Parent Night on Tuesday, October 12th, outdoors at the Parlin, thanks to the custodial staff who helped us set up the space, which worked very well for families and community partners and vendors who set up the tables. Approximately 400 people attended the festivities, and the chicken and rice guys actually served 360 meals. We offered face painting, a popcorn machine, and had several giveaways and raffles. We also signed up 140 parents and guardians for adult ESL classes. And most importantly, our EL teachers and administrators were able to talk to parents and guardians about their students. And most importantly, our EL teachers and administrators were able to talk to parents and guardians about their students' education, EL programming, and access testing and scoring. Our family liaison set up a booth and shared their contact information, and our EHS student ambassadors, as always, were onsite to help ensure the success of the event. In celebration of Latin Heritage Month, we scheduled four free dance classes for different sectors of our community. These were planned by Chief Equity Officer Corey McCarthy and led by the Baju Cole Dance Studio. And the classes have been held on Tuesdays. Our first was on September 28 for students in kindergarten through grade 6. Our second class was for students in grade 7 through 12 at EHS. The October 12 class was for EPS teachers and staff, and the series will conclude tomorrow with a session for adult family members of our EPS students. It was very satisfying, and I think it's really important, too, to note the cross-section of events and opportunities we've been organizing and extending to our students, staff, and families to celebrate Latin Heritage Month and just to celebrate back-to-school. From these sort of dance classes to the classroom-based activities for STEM Week to the community-facing EL Night, I think that we're seeing our district come back full force, and my thanks again to everyone who has helped plan all of these wonderful events that have started off our school year. Also, before we move on, I did want to call your attention to the Equity Office page under the Departments tab on our website. So there you'll find the memos that Mr. McCarthy prepares for educators and staff, in which parents and guardians might also be interested. The memos contain links to relevant articles, podcasts, professional developments, webinars, as well as personal messages and updates from Mr. McCarthy. The EPS is excited to announce that we have been accepted into the Spring Cohort of the Massachusetts Family School Partnership Initiative, or FSPI. So this will help our team support the innovation and implementation of powerful family engagement strategies this year and beyond. This application was completed by Community Engagement Manager Jeanette Velez. The FSPI will create space, time, and support for people to reflect on our family engagement and effective partnership strategies as we recover from the pandemic. So as a member district of the FSPI, we will be taking stock of our current family partnership efforts through a reflection process. We will be identifying strengths, gaps, and areas for opportunity. We'll be learning successful strategies and approaches used in other districts. It will build broader awareness and capacity to support deeper family partnership work. And we'll be participating in several cross-district sessions and a series of district school team reflection activity meetings held virtually and facilitated by SMI coaches. And by way of background, in 2012, DESI worked with stakeholders on a set of fundamentals that practitioners across the state have used to guide family and community engagement work. And in 2020, the fundamentals were updated and aligned with strengthening partnerships, Massachusetts Prenatal Through Young Adult Family Engagement Framework, which multiple state agencies use to align and to guide family engagement across all aspects of family life. So this is a continuation of that work and is evidence of the fact that engagement is an area that demands our continual attention and refinement. On behalf of the Everett Public Schools, I want to congratulate Everett, sorry, Everett School Teacher, Caverian School Teacher, and veteran Everett educator Jada Simmons Enomani for being recognized by the Mystic River Watershed Association. Specifically, Jada is being presented the Ripple Award during a virtual event on Wednesday, October 20, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. So according to my RWA Education Program Manager Marion Miller, the Ripple Award is an acknowledgement of the time, energy, and enthusiasm that Jada and her students have put towards the river and the watershed, and for the multiple opportunities she has created for students to think about the issues in their own community and act on their observations. So the Mystic River Watershed Association was founded in 1972 with the mission to protect and restore the Mystic River, its tributaries, and watershed lands for the benefit of present and future generations, and to celebrate the value, importance, and great beauty of these natural resources. The organization promotes science, advocacy, and education to ensure a vibrant, healthy, and resilient environment for all plants, animals, and people that call the watershed home. And the watershed covers 76 square miles, or roughly 1% of the land area in Massachusetts, including Everett. Since our last meeting, the Parent Information Center has completed a smooth and successful transition from the Caverian School to the space inside City Hall. We did not hear of any issues about the location change among families who had scheduled appointments. It seemed like that went without confusion. Inside City Hall, PIC staff and visitors have utilized a comfortable and open space that does encourage social distancing. We are in the process of installing a reception desk and adding a room divider to create space for extra desks with computers to accommodate extra staff during busy registration periods. We're also exploring ways to make the PIC more expansive. Suggestions include a bookshelf with literature for all ages and languages, a collection of up-to-date information for service providers and community-based organizations, and finding time and space to create workspaces for parents to drop resumes, search for jobs, locate services, and so on. I will keep you updated and bring photos when all of the renovations and updates have been made to the space. The EPS is in the beginning stages of developing a strategy for reopening libraries and providing library services to the students and families in our pre-K to 8 schools. I'm definitely a big believer in the value of libraries for our students and our families and their key place in the overall success of our district. So to that end, we are asking for families to complete a brief survey on library services. This survey will provide us with valuable information while also giving respondents the chance to speak freely about what they would like to see in a school library. We do have a quick link on the homepage of our website, and the survey is available in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole. We will be sending out blasts as well to get everybody that link, so please respond to the questions. It will be very important information as we plan moving forward. I do want to thank our library coordinator, Mary Pulio, who is overseeing the effort with key guidance from the State Board of Library Commissioners on the strategic planning process. And establishing a formal plan has additionally an added benefit of making our district eligible to apply for library-related grants, so we are looking forward to that as well. So Everett recorded 20 positive COVID-19 cases between October 1 and 14. Our daily case counts have not forced us at this point to change the daily operations at any of our schools so far this year, but the pandemic does continue to be a daily fact of life in our schools, and COVID's trajectory is definitely unpredictable. We saw over this weekend that we actually recorded eight staff and student cases at six of our schools with several close contacts. So we do need to remain focused on wearing face coverings inside of our schools, encouraging vaccination, and utilizing the rapid testing program to the greatest extent possible. Shown here are the percentages of Everett students who have received the first dose of the vaccine and those who are fully vaccinated. Each category increased a few points since our last report. Among 16- to 19-year-olds in Everett, 68% are fully vaccinated, so that is slightly better than the state average, but still a bit short from the 80% benchmark that would give districts the go-ahead to reconsider the mask mandate. We are falling a bit short of the state average when it comes to the vaccination of our 12- to 15-year-olds, so we will remain vigilant for that age group. The Cambridge Health Alliance continues to do everything it can to help us make the vaccine readily available to our community in general and the EPS in particular. And I know that the city continues its ongoing efforts as well. This week in our schools, the CHA is holding clinics daily from 12:30 to 1:30 p.m. at a different school each day. So tomorrow's clinic will be held at the Caverian. Wednesday's is at the Parlin. Thursday's is at the Madeline English, and Friday's is at the Woodyer School. As for our Test and Stay Program, the Cambridge Health Alliance is also working with us and with DESI's test provider, CIC, on a formal agreement to administer our Binax Now Rapid Tests. So the goal is to be able to supplement the services Cataldo Ambulance provides so that we can administer rapid tests for all symptomatic students and staff, as well as anyone who is identified as a close contact in all of our 10 EPS schools. So currently, all students and staff can get tested, but there might be a delay in Cataldo Ambulance staff to arrive. So the objective is to have enough testing in all schools at all times, or at least be able to dispatch staff to any school within 10 minutes. In addition, the Everett Board of Health is hoping to assign support from the Cambridge Health Alliance to some schools and Cataldo Ambulance to other schools. So we thank the city for their support in helping us get the Test and Stay Program to the capacity that we need it to be in order to keep our students in school. This slide shows our enrollment figures as of October 1 over the past six years. So as you can see, our numbers have remained fairly consistent, with 7,100 being an accurate general approximation of our overall student population from pre-K through 12th grade. This chart also shows that we have not seen a noteworthy boost or decrease in our enrollment data from last year. So 2020 was the only year on this chart in which our enrollment dipped to under 7,000. So more specifically, our enrollment fell by 162 students, bringing us to a total of 6,969 students district-wide. This was not surprising, given that some families of our youngest students, for example, did not enroll in early education programs. And we also did have students who enrolled in homeschool, private schools, or Catholic schools last year. This is also very similar to the trend that has been seen in school districts all across the state. As of October 1 of this year, our enrollment is back over 7,000, at 7,057 to be exact, which is up by 82 students from last year. So this means that we have almost recouped our enrollment numbers district-wide from October of 2019. And I think the data point that I want to bring greatest attention to is our high school enrollment. We are currently at 2,177 students, which is an all-time high. And even last year, when the rest of our enrollment numbers dipped at the other grades, our high school enrollment actually rose. So I think this corroborates what we have already known and have already begun to discuss, which is potentially the need for a new high school or a second campus for our current school. So this is simply a snapshot of our enrollment data to give you an idea of where we are as a system. However, at our next meeting, we will also be providing a much more detailed presentation that distills our grade-by-grade enrollment and that hones in on some data points that will require some level of action or consideration moving forward. So a handful of troubling incidents at Everett High School have received a lot of attention in recent weeks, as have similar altercations at high schools around the state and country. The images have been captured and shared via social media and have attracted the attention of the media. It is definitely alarming and upsetting, and obviously, it demands our attention. We are in the midst of what we might call the pandemic's social and emotional recovery. And this effort is, you know, not a technical one. It's not like fixing a roof or replacing a broken piece of technology. We can't do a series of small things and then stand before you and say that the problem is solved. So we are looking at every aspect of the operation of the high school and/or other schools with the mindset that no element of the process is too small to consider, and if needed, reinforce or change. So some of the aspects of our action plan are as follows, and together, we do believe that these are helping our students and staff create a positive and welcoming atmosphere. So in terms of attendance and student movement around EHS, we are accounting for every student, which is a crucial step to ensuring student safety and success. We are almost completely done making identification cards for all students that they will wear on lanyards around their neck. They're color-coded by Academy. We are limiting and tracking those students who are out of class for any reason. After the daily morning attendance is posted by the teacher, a full-time staff member is stationed at the entrance of the school building, so that students who are coming in late can be accurately recorded in our Aspen Student Information Center. This allows teachers who are in their classrooms the ability to see in Aspen that students have entered the building and that they should be expecting them in class. And there is a system also for informing deans or administrative staff if the student does not come to or show up in class. Attendance errors, you know, which make it difficult to determine whether a student is where they should be or being rectified now throughout the day, rather than just at the end of the day, that also helps us to make sure that we are accounting for all of our students. In assessing administrative duties, we have been, as is the standard practice in most schools, teachers and staff members are scheduled for administrative duties, which are not in conflict with their collective bargaining agreement, where they're stationed at various parts of the building throughout the day in order to provide extra visibility and support and encouragement to our students. Central office staff have been providing daily onsite assistance to support the operation of the school. In addition to myself, Deputy Superintendent Kim Tsai, Assistant Superintendents Kevin Shawn and Charlie Obremsky have been spending a lot of time at EHS, again, helping and supporting staff in any way possible. Other factors and considerations that I would also like to share are in an effort to reaffirm our obligation to our district values in our handbook. The high school handbook is being reviewed with students and families. Communication will be provided to our students and families, reminding them of the policies and asking them to acknowledge and sign electronically or in hard copy, whatever is easier for them. Like districts everywhere, we are also diligently trying to fill any vacant positions or fill in for teachers who are calling in absent. I know I've discussed student success coaches, and we actually had four positions available. I'm excited to say that three offers went out today and two have already been accepted. So we are excited that we are starting to fill some of these positions. Also stressing to students the importance of responsible social media use. On this front, I can report firsthand that our students and teachers are engaging in meaningful conversations about this important and ever-present topic. We are, at the most elemental level, striving to have one good day followed by another. And after spending most of the last eight school days at the high school, I do believe that we are making progress, while we still have some ways to go. I think there has been a shift in what we're seeing in the school. And this is not intended to be the first and final words on the health and well-being of Everett High School. This is, as I said, a process, and I look forward to sharing regular updates throughout the year. For our homecoming festivities for EHS students, they will be held this Friday inside Everett Veterans Memorial Stadium from 3:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. The event will start with our athletes parading, and our band, our cheerleaders, parading from EHS to the stadium along with our students, where we will then have a great setup for students to enjoy. So we'll have food trucks from Caloon, Roxy's Cookie Monster, a rolling video truck, and obstacle course games, and mystery prizes and giveaways. The celebration will wrap up at 5:30, so that our undefeated football team can kickoff versus Somerville at 6 p.m. So we hope to see all of our EHS students with us on Friday night as we celebrate the Crimson Tide and everyone here in our general community for the game afterwards. The next day, we will be holding our Fall Fest. So that will be a district-wide festival from 12 to 2 p.m., which will be held at Everett High School. So these festivities will also include free food and dessert trucks, games, inflatables, photo booths, and giveaways. This event is free for EPS students, staff, and families. So while Friday's homecoming is designed specifically for our high schoolers, the Fall Fest is for all of our students across all grade levels and all of our families. And so we hope and trust that the afternoon time slot will be more convenient for families and younger students, and we hope to see a lot of our community there. Now I will turn things over to Devens Principal Dr. Brian Wallace and Assistant Principal Dr. Brittany Pulio for this week's school showcase. Dr. Wallace has been an educator in the Everett Public Schools for 23 years. He was a special education teacher at EHS for seven years before becoming an administrator, first at EHS, and for the past nine years as the first and only principal of the Devens. Dr. Wallace is a proud third-generation teacher in the Everett Public Schools who followed in the footsteps of his father and grandfather, both of whom were EHS math teachers. Dr. Pulio is in her first year as the Devens School Assistant Principal, which is a position we added for the first time in 2021-2022 school year. She has dedicated her career in Everett to working with special education students and is an original Devens staff member. In 2017, Dr. Pulio became the Devens School Educational Team Leader, where she built close connections with parents and outside agencies to better support our students. She obtained a bachelor's and master's degree from Riviera University, where she majored in human development, learning disabilities, and reading. She also holds a doctorate degree in pre-K to 12 leadership from Endicott College. So without further delay, take away Doctors Wallace and Pulio.
One moment, just...
Sorry, I need you guys to vote.
The formality.
So moved.
Okay. So motion made in secondary to invite Dr. Wallace and Dr. Pulio. Part of us, all of us, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Welcome, Everett High School.
Well, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? Well, Dr. Pulio and I would like to thank you for having us here this evening. If we could have the next slide, please. So here you see our demographic data. So here you see our demographic data from the DESI website. Our current enrollment is forty-seven students. Ten of those students are tuitioned in from other communities. You can see our student population is diverse, twenty percent EL students, one hundred percent of our students receive specialized instruction in considered high needs, and eighty percent of our students are economically disadvantaged. Could have the next slide, please. So as you know, the Devens School is a K to twelve public day special education program. So naturally, we have a very strong therapeutic component to our program, which begins with our clinical team. We have a licensed clinical social worker, two Elliott clinicians, five therapeutic crisis interventionists. And as a component of our social emotional instruction, we have targeted social skills intervention. Grades K to eight have weekly social skills groups. Our K to twelve students, our high needs students have dyads. Our nine to twelve daily themed social development courses. The high school students have social instruction courses such as mindfulness Monday, teamwork Tuesday, what would you do Wednesday, therapeutic Thursday, and a student council on Friday, where peer groups evaluate each other's progress to make determinations about advancements through our level system or possible level drops. We are a TCIS school, which means we're a therapeutic crisis intervention school. That's a crisis intervention program out of Cornell University. It's the foundation of everything we do in terms of collecting data to monitor students' social emotional development. And it's also our school-wide behavioral support and data collection model. So we have four levels that kids progress through. When kids reach level four, that's when we start having conversations about transitioning to less restrictive settings. For daily data collection, we have point sheets, and all of our levels in our point systems revolve around our four rules, and everything is all aligned. So it's be safe, be respectful, be responsible, be a leader. Could have the next slide, please. Therapeutic services and student opportunities. The Grow Room, which is depicted in this slide, is something that was approved by the superintendent. And this was introduced to the Devens School by Lenker McNally of the Everett Community Growers. To be constructed by Devens School students is a therapeutic space for our school. We worked with Lenker and the Everett Community Growers over the summer. Students and staff were out at the gardens in front of the old high school. And we'll be working again with the Everett Community Growers when the Grow Room is finally built. As part of our admissions packet to the Devens School, we have access to community field trips through a universal permission slip which parents sign. So that gives us access to things such as the Grace Food Pantry, where we work very closely with Irene Cardillo. The kids will go to the food pantry, help them unload trucks, and do some volunteer work with the food pantry. And in addition to that, because of our strong relationship with Irene, we've been able to get a lot of very generous donations to support Devens School families. You'll notice that we're getting a school van, which is to transport our students to Windrush Farms in North Andover, where they'll be accessing therapeutic horseback riding or hypotherapy. And that's something that our students will participate in, three sessions per student, which will run from January through June. In addition to therapeutic services and our student opportunities through our Elliott Partnership, we are able to connect families to therapeutic mentors in home counseling, family partners, intensive care coordinators, metaverses through psychiatrists, and also we can connect them to the Family Resource Center. Could have the next slide, please. So we're a relationship-based school, and we utilize our relationships with students to promote behavioral changes through our crisis intervention program, which consists of life space interviews, crisis co-regulation. And in that process, we empower students to take accountability. And we do that through just understanding that your mindset of behavior needs to change. And what I mean by that is we view it as communication. And when we view behavior as communication, we make connections with students, we're able to close that gap and help modify behavior. And that's basically the essence of our crisis intervention program. And then to talk about academic improvement, Dr. Puleo.
Thank you. So when our students are at their emotional baseline, it's our goal to provide the highest quality instruction that we can. And the first thing that we're doing is the win block, the what I need block for all of our students K to twelve. And the goal of this block is to provide targeted intervention to allow more class time to be spent on core instruction. Right now, our elementary students are focusing on ELA gaps. Our middle school students are focusing on the math gaps, and our high school students, depending on which grade they're in, are either working on biology vocabulary or formulating open response questions for math and ELA MCAS. We do benchmark testing and progress monitoring testing on all of our students K to twelve. We use Dibbles and Akadants math for K to five, I Ready for K to eight, and Ed Mentum for nine to twelve, and we're aligned with what all of the other schools in the district are using in terms of timelines. We use data meetings throughout the school year. Dr. Wallace and I meet every Monday morning to review our I Ready and Ed Mentum usage and to see if there's any classrooms that need additional support. We meet monthly with our staff for data meetings. Our building's a little bit unique compared to the other schools in the sense that we're not doing a grade-level data meeting because our classrooms are mixed grades. So we do an elementary, a middle, and a high school data meeting once a month. All of our lesson plans are aligned to grade-level standards and are using the same curriculum that's being used in all of the other schools in the district. Our instruction is scaffolded to the individual student's level while maintaining the integrity of all of the grade-level standards. Can I have the next slide, please? For post-secondary planning, we have a full-time guidance counselor and job placement coordinator. So far this year, the job placement coordinator has had success in placing several of our high school students with jobs within the community. Part of that is coaching our students on how to attend interviews and how to present themselves to prospective employers. Once our students have their jobs, the next part is how do they manage their paycheck that's coming in? We've had our job placement coordinator go to local banks with our students in order to set up checking accounts and savings accounts. We have great relationships with community businesses as well. Prior to the shutdown, we did have several community members come in to speak to our students. We've formed partnerships with MRC, which is the Mass Rehab Commission, and PRIETS, which is the Pre-Employment Transition Services, to help our students in high school. So new this year is the PRIET service. This is available to students who are fourteen and older, as long as they're in high school. And this helps students prepare for prospective jobs through job exploration counseling or work readiness training. And for students who are two years out from graduation, if needed, they can get more individualized services through MRC to help them have economic self-sufficiency once they graduate. For our students who are looking at colleges as a post-secondary option, we are an SAT testing site for students with disabilities, and they are able to take the SAT during the school day with accommodations. Our guidance counselor does also help set up college visits, and if students are interested, armed services representatives. Can I have the next slide, please? So this year, for the first time, we did a Know Your School Better Night. We had a food truck, and we had several families from our middle and high school come, which was a really great time for all of them. It was great to see our families in person for the first time in over a year instead of over Zoom. We also do a Thanksgiving brunch. We didn't get to do one last year, but we're looking forward to the brunch this year. I know many of you have attended the brunch, and it's definitely our most successful day of the year, and we're looking forward to seeing you all there in November. We utilize Lion Bridge Translation Services, just like the rest of the district, to help communicate with our parents who English is not their first language. Our staff, we have several bilingual staff members who speak Creole, Portuguese, and Spanish, which are the three languages spoken in our building other than English. And it's really nice to have a staff that is representative of the student population in our building. We hold quarterly Board of Directors meetings, and our Board of Director serves as the liaison between the central administration and ourself. We have five members on our board. Four of them are retired teachers from the Everett Public Schools. Two of them were actually original Devens School staff members, so they have quite a vested interest in our building. And the final member is a lifelong Everett resident who has a passion for the Everett Public Schools. We also have a parent advisory group, which meets quarterly. We don't have very high participation in our parent advisory group, but we do communicate very frequently with our parents. I like to say that there's no surprises in meetings with our parents because our teachers are in contact with them very frequently about behavior, academics, and any needs that may arise. Next slide, please.
So this was just a quote that I included, and basically it just states that emotional competence is the prerequisite to instruction and learning. I thought it was particularly relevant now that we're back in session. Does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Cadella?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Dr. Wallace and/or Dr. Puleo. I have a question. When we take an out-of-district student, does that student's parents decide, does the district decide if it's better for that student to go to the Devens School or to go to Shore Collaborative? How does that actually work?
So are you talking about students that are referred to us from other communities?
Yes.
So what would typically happen is if a student is referred, being considered for an out-of-district placement in a community, we could be one of several schools that are being considered for placement. So the other schools, I won't always necessarily know what the other options are for that student.
Okay, so if they come to us, we just accept them? Or is the parent aware that there are options?
Oh, yeah, yeah, because every school has an out-of-district placement coordinator, and they look at the student's profile and the data, and then they may try to make connections between the student's history and what schools will make the most sense for that student. So.
Okay. Are you comfortable with the enrollment that's there? Do we have enough room? Do we have enough staff, resources within the Devens for the students that we do have there?
Yeah, so I'll tell you that our enrollment is always changing, and it's low right now. And it's low mainly because with the schools being closed, and even though we were open last year, we had an attendance rate of about fifty percent. So we were not getting the kids in, but we were still seeing that same flux of kids going out, whether it was to transition to a neighborhood school, moving from the community, or meeting criteria for another level of care. So that's why we've seen it drop. In terms of staffing, I think we're in a position where we can accommodate a number of referrals, and I think we're going to start to see that very soon. So I think we're in a position where we can support students in the district.
Thank you, and thank you both for all you do, and to you too, Mr. Murray, because I know that's where you are, and you do great work there. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perzey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our guests, Dr. Wallace. I don't believe Dr. Puleo was there, but I'm not going to take credit for this. I believe it was Mr. Parker back when, prior to our new superintendent coming on, I believe used to look on the Everett Public School website, and the Devens School would not be listed as one of the schools. And I give all the credit to Mr. Parker for pointing that out. Back when we took a tour with, it was actually another potential superintendent candidate, we met with you and your staff, Mr. Parker and I. And principals used to come before us with a wish list. And Mr. Parker and I, that day, were stunned to find out that a particular position we had approved was never felt, you know? And that's something that we, as the school committee, had to, has to own, that I believe, going back a little ways, Devens School was sort of forgotten and not given the type of priority that it should. My question for you, Dr. Wallace and Dr. Puleo, I'd be glad to hear your comments, new to the scene, but how do you feel about how the school is treated, where you fit in now under the new administration?
Want me to start? Okay, so, well, I'll tell you that I had some very in-depth conversations with the administration. And in that conversation, you know, I was asked to, you know, really throw things out there that I would love to do that maybe seemed like, I don't want to say unrealistic, but kind of a stretch or a long shot. And one of those being, you know, therapeutic horseback riding and having a vehicle that's exclusive to the Devens School to expand what we can offer our kids and the opportunities we can expose them to. So this is happening. I think that clearly demonstrates a commitment to our program and certainly enhances what we can offer our kids. The job placement coordinator, who doubles as our guidance counselor, has been able to place kids in jobs right out of the gate, work with them around personal finance, you know? So all of these things just put us in a position where we're going to have better outcomes for our students. So it's really, it's been amazing. It's, to be honest, it's more than I could have imagined. So, yeah, we're in a very, very good position. And like I said, you know, the enrollment's constantly changing, and because of what's happened with the school closing, we're not getting the number of referrals. We haven't been, but we will be. And when we drive up our enrollment, we certainly have much more to offer our kids. So, and I'd like to thank the administration for that. Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Perzey.
And I can second what Dr. Wallace has said. I've been at the Devens School since we opened. I started as a classroom teacher there, and I can attest that when I was in the classroom, just getting curriculum was very difficult. We were often overlooked. And now, as the assistant principal, and my main focus is instruction, it's a phone call away, and I've gotten any curriculum that we've needed that we should have had years ago within days, which has been amazing because our students, when they're at their baseline, they do deserve to have a very high-quality instruction, and they're getting that now.
Thank you both, appreciate it.
Ms. Murray?
Hi, and thank you for coming before us tonight and sharing what is maybe one of my favorite schools in the whole world with the parents viewing at home and also with all of us. I just want to say, behavior is communication, maybe my favorite quote that I've heard this entire month. And I'm an English teacher, so that's saying a lot. But from one educator to another, I'm going to beg to both of you to talk a little bit about what that means, because I think that so many parents right now and so many educators right now are watching behaviors of children and taking them as forms of communication, and the children don't know that that's what's happening. The kid just thinks, I'm acting out, I'm being bad, I'm pouting, I'm whatever, and we're all looking at that behavior and saying, you're saying this. But I don't know how many of us are taking the moment to ask the kid if that's what they mean to be saying. they mean to be saying. And I just wanted you to talk a little bit about the fact that sometimes punishment isn't appropriate in these situations, and that one can have consequences without being punitive, because I know that the Devons is not a particularly punitive place, but it is a place that holds kids accountable and has a system in place where kids learn to change negative behaviors in very high levels of success. And I think that if I can beg you as one educator to another, we could all learn from the Devons right now. So thank you.
Thank you. So would you like me to touch on that? Okay, so what I mean by that is, I mean, I could talk about this, because it's been my passion for 23 years, but when Ms. Puleo referenced baseline, baseline is our normal level of functioning. So when we're off baseline and we enter into crisis, for kids, younger kids, older kids, even us as adults, what happens is we're managing something that we don't know how to manage, so it manifests in negative behavior often. And so just understanding that ultimately, that's communication, you're communicating. You know, just to put it in real simple terms, as an adult, when you get upset about something and it really blows your mind, you typically try to find somebody to vent to. So what you're trying to do is you're trying to communicate this emotion that you're managing that's really hard for you to wrap your mind around. So when I say that the Devon School is a building, it's a relationship-based school, you know, we look at behavior as kids trying to express that there's something that they feel need or want, and they don't know how to convey it when they're not on their baseline. So our crisis intervention program is about understanding that behavior is communication, and ultimately, when we can support kids through crisis, and we can get them back to baseline, then we can have conversations about that experience and how we manage it differently when it happens again. So that's the abridged version of our crisis intervention program.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your words of wisdom. Dr. Puleo, would you like to add anything?
I think he summarized it great. I think what we try to kind of hammer home to parents and other providers who come into our school is that it's okay for our students to feel certain emotions, it's just how we show it. It's okay to be angry, but it's how you show it, and that's the message that we try to get across to our students.
Thank you both so much for being here and for talking to us tonight.
Sure, thank you. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our guests. I just want to be cognizant, because, you know, we have our wonderful student rep here at the table with us, as well as we just heard from a peer student that talked about self-advocacy and has also been very vocal in making sure that student voice is at the table. Is there anything we can do to support your students in connecting with those resources and making sure that they feel represented at the policy level, at the district level? You know, any ideas? I know I've heard from students, some of the best ideas that, you know, they told us what they need, and it makes a world of difference. So is there any way we can make those connections and help support your students?
Like I said earlier, when Mr. Abuzey mentioned, you know, our conversation back during the superintendent search, I appreciate that. I really think that the level of support we've seen administratively is beyond what we could have imagined. And I feel like when we ask for things, you know, we're getting them. And so while I appreciate that, I really feel like we're very well-supported. If there's one area where, you know, I would like to see a change, and I've had a few conversations with Ms. Velez about this, it's getting our parents involved and how we can do that. We had in New York School Better Night in September, and the turnout, it was a food truck in our schoolyard, it was a good turnout, but things like that. It's, it'd be nice to see that parents are more involved, and I believe that they feel the school is a nice, friendly, kind, caring, supportive place with a nice atmosphere. I believe that, I've heard people say that, that, you know, they can come in and they can sense that, which I think is a great compliment to the staff at the Devon School, because that's an experience. It's not, it's not something you really can write or explain, it's just, you just feel it. So I know that that foundation is there, but if we could get more parents involved, that would be great, because those are the ones that would really help drive our programming. And our parent advisory group, just the attendance, has just historically been pretty inconsistent.
And I think you're, maybe I misspoke, and I, but I think it's along the same lines about building community and just making sure that your students feel connected to the broader community and that they have voice. So, you know, I know you mentioned student advisory council, and it's more on like a peer review level, but if there's some way that they want to express something, you know, whether, again, as a policy level or, you know, so the broader district, if we can make that more accessible, as we have a student rep here, we have a student council that communicates fairly regularly with us at the district level. I just want to make sure, as I'm reminded so frequently, that, you know, you, you know, it's not enough to speak for someone, you got to make sure there's room at the table and give them the space to tell you what they need.
I apologize for that misunderstanding. Yes, yeah, no, I think that's definitely something that I could speak to the high school teachers about and have them mention that in one of their student council meetings, and see what kind of a response we get from the students. I have a, I have an, I think they would probably be honored to be involved in something like that and have a voice for our school. So, yeah, no, I appreciate that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cadella?
Thank you, Marconi. Through you to the Devon School team. I remember when that building was sold, the former Devon School. My first time out as the school committee person, I really got into working with people with disabilities, all the special ed students, and I learned so much, so, so much. And I was totally taken aback by how much, even back then, our schools were doing for students with needs. But when that came about, that, the possibility of bringing some of our students back into the city that were being bussed out daily, to whether it be Lexington or Beverly and up to the landmark, wherever they were going, I remember the hurt on parents, although thankful that they had the opportunity before the Devons became the Devons for this reason, thinking, "My child is gone so long during the day. They leave early, they come home late, and it's a long day for anyone, but it's especially a long day for these students." And they weren't in their home neighborhood. So when that was, initially, that was going to be an apartment building, it was going to be a 55-plus or a 65-plus, and yes, very needed in the city, but when that fell through and the opportunity arose for it to become the Devon School and be what it is today, was like, I don't know of anybody on any board that would have ever stood up against that. And back then, we had three boards, because we were bicameral legislation, and that was a sense of pride to bring our children home again. So I'm so happy it's there, and I know my colleagues said it's our favorite school in the world, and it's a sense of pride to be able to have this in our own city and to service as many children. And as far as the therapeutic course program, I just commend you for all of that. So continue to do the great work you do, and know that it doesn't go unnoticed, and we're here for you, just as you're there for our students. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Di Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to be redundant, but I just want to congratulate both of you for the excellent job that you're doing at the Devon School. By this presentation here tonight, it really gives us a good understanding of what you're working, working with, what you're doing, and how you benefit our children. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I can from the chair, first of all, out-of-district tuition, was it, is it $35,000? Okay, so when you let the public know when you're bringing these students from other cities and towns, they're paying $35,000 to attend Devon School, which is a credit. So, you know, Dr. Wallace, Dr. Puleo's, I, you know, winding down the Frank Parker farewell tour. I'm really happy what I heard tonight, because we've had a lot of conversations over the years. You know, you've got a van. I know when you got denied bus service, you know, in the past, our own bus service to Vic's field trips. The job placement coordinator that you mentioned, it was on paper, but it wasn't filled, and here we are, we have that person. Going back to the superintendent search, all four candidates went through the Devon School. And, you know, quite honestly, Mr. Wallace coordinated every one of them and told about the program, and also too, we talked about autonomy, how we wanted building autonomy and physical autonomy, and I think we heard tonight that you have that. And, you know, we went there, and, you know, you're one of the reasons why she wanted the job, because you guys, Dr. Puleo, the rest of your staff going, you know, Mr. Murray and everybody there going down, said, Paul Maycore, the custodian, I mean, he's TCI has trained, you know, he's part of the fabric, he's part of the system, the gender. It helps that he's about 6'5", but, you know, it's just, it's just, you know, it hasn't been an easy nine years, and you've both been persistent. Dr. Puleo, you grew from a staff member to now being part of the leadership, and I'm really happy to hear tonight the progress that's made, the commitment that's made, and your commitment, and congratulations, well-deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of our guests? Intervening motion to excuse the customary thanks?
So moved.
Motion to second it to excuse the customary thanks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose so moved. Thanks for your time.
Thank you both.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Di Maria?
Mr. Chairman, I do have to go. I have another commitment, and it's not for the Red Sox game. But before I do go, I just wanted to thank the entire members of the school committee and the school administration. I think we worked quickly together with the police chief and my staff on really come up with a solid plan to give parents a sense of security here in the school. I really want to commend you, Madam Superintendent, and your entire team, Mr. Obramski, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Norman, Mr. Stringali. We listened, we listened, we learned a lot in those couple meetings, and we're implementing a great plan, and I feel comfortable as a parent that we're doing what's right for our children. And, you know, and I think I had this conversation, and not to minimize these fights that have happened, but remember when we were in high school, we had similar events in high school back, even class of '91, we had similar events that happened. They just weren't videotaped. They were dealt with, our parents were called, kids went down to the office, you know, if you went to Powlin, Mr. Mangerean gave you cookies and milk, right? If you were at high school, Mr. Leo, Mr. Malloy would grab you by the back of your head and tell you, knock this, knock it off, but it wasn't so publicized, it wasn't so highlighted. Today it all is, right? And, but I think, again, not to be redundant, but the measures that we put in place, from the IDs to no hoodies and no hats, and bringing back the support, all good. Again, so I just want to say thank you, and I'm sorry to leave, cut out so early, but have a great rest of your night.
All right, thank you, sir. Madam Superintendent, your show.
I love that, thank you. All right, were there any other questions or anything?
Are we done with the update?
Yes.
Okay.
Done with number one.
Okay. Wow, those fast hands, okay. All right. Mr. Bellas has not spoken yet, so I'll recognize him first.
Surprising, I mean, actually, too quiet tonight.
Unless you got a microphone problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me? Yes, and thank you, Superintendent. I think, and I just want to echo what the mayor said about the actions that have been put in place, and for your constant presence here at the high school. I actually want to tell people that the superintendent's actually working out of the high school now, they're like, "What?" Which is true, I've come here for the past two Fridays, not for 15 minutes, but for hours, walked around the building, went inside of the bathrooms, in classrooms, here at the library, in the principal's office, in the cafeteria, spoke with students, with teachers. Actually, it's something that was very powerful that I learned. It was actually Marcy, who, or Mercy, who brought, who was here with us tonight. I think the superintendent was in the room when he asked her, "What can we do to improve the schools, or high schools?" She's like, "Yeah, the fight is something that we, that I get very concerned about, but what I'm very concerned about is that you," and she pointed to all of us, the superintendent recalls this, "you're not looking at the students' mental health needs, the social and emotional needs of our students. You're very concerned about, you know, putting staff, putting police officers, putting this, putting that, putting that, but you don't know what's behind our minds when we are fighting." And that was very, a very powerful statement that she needs, and we should look at that when we are thinking about fixing this situation. I just want to reiterate that we need to keep constant contact with parents, especially parents who speak English as a second language. I was contacted, because I do speak Portuguese and Spanish as well, I was contacted by several parents concerned, because rumors, and now as the mayor said, social media, right? And besides social media, the rumors that the place is falling apart. I rushed here, because what I heard was like, "Oh, my God, where's the fire trucks?" Because Everett High is falling apart, and that was not what I saw here for over three hours inside of this building. So we need, you know, putting the rumors aside, need, we need to constant, like, communicate with our parents what's going on. Perhaps even a, I don't know, parent's meeting, or having something similar, you can bring these parents to our high school and tell them all of these updates. I came here last Friday, went outside, I did a video in Portuguese, and I sent it to a bunch of Brazilian parents, and the video has over 500 views, not because it's Marconi, because those were parents who speak Portuguese, who needed to hear in Portuguese that things were okay, that we are working to make sure that the place is safe. And it is safe. So I told them, I was like, I just leaving high school, the Everett High now, I was outside. So to make a long story short, we need to keep that level of communication with parents, especially parents who, you know, who speak English as a second language, to make sure that they, put the rumors aside, those who do not want to fix the situation, but instead making a big deal out of it for their own benefit. We should make sure that these parents, we are in constant contact with these parents, because once they hear that things are fine, the actions that we are putting in place to help with this situation, no, we are not denying, no, there is no fight here, no, there is fight, yeah, there are fights, there are issues, that we are trying to fix it, but what we are doing to fix it. So once I learned from you, Superintendent, from that visit, I told all of them Portuguese and in Spanish, I was interviewed by telemundo, and they were like, "Oh..." I was interviewed by Telemundo and they're like, oh, oh, like you could, you could feel the level of no, things are, God, still thank you, thank you so much. I've heard so many blessings that I hope that God gives all those blessings to Ever High. So, I ended that, but level of communication that we need to keep that like really open with those parents. And again, I'm not saying only to parents who speak English as a second language, but to all parents, to make sure that, you know, the rumors are put aside and they know that we are taking action. That the superintendent is actually here, not in her office, working out of the principal's office in order to fix this situation. So, thank you. Sorry for the long speech, but I needed to say that.
Okay, I'll recognize Ms. Cadwell next.
I actually have a few questions regarding the update, so I will defer to my other colleagues. They may even ask the same question. I don't want to take up too much time. It's up to them. Okay, I'll ask. Okay, the first one is, if it threw you to the superintendent, we got a snapshot of what's going on with the rapid testing. I have got quite a few parental calls on this. Could you just give us, even if it's an example, like if somebody has a symptom today in a classroom, what's the procedure?
Yes, so with the test and stay program, if they have a symptom, they would come to the nurse's office, the main office, whoever is the dedicated person at that school. They get a quick nose swab, and that test is returned in 15 minutes if they test negative. Now, there's different, there are differences between symptomatic asymptomatic, differences between symptomatic vaccinated, asymptomatic vaccinated. So there's like a whole decision tree that we sort of have to use in order to determine what, with all of the variables at play, what happens. But in, in the simplest sense, if there's a student who is asymptomatic and they test negative, they can stay. And if they continue to test negative for the next four days, they stay in school. And one of the things that we had been coming here with was just the capacity concerns around test and stay. And you may have heard that this is not just Everett, this is a statewide issue. I think they, there was even something about the National Guard coming in and, and which we actually surprisingly did not need to take advantage of that, because now we do have more capacity than other districts. So with Cataldo and CHA combined, we have been able to meet the demand that we have. So we're not necessarily like we were a few weeks ago saying that there were students who we wanted to test but couldn't, we didn't have the capacity. Now that is no longer the case. That being said, there are a lot of times when if a student is symptomatic and not vaccinated, like there's different things that have to happen, which does make it so that the test and stay program doesn't necessarily mean that everybody gets to stay.
Right, okay. Beyond that, as far as, I know that at first we only had Cataldo and they couldn't be everywhere, and now CHA is involved. Do we have someone at every school or do like if something, someone was at the high school, but they were at the Lafayette that day, do they get called to come here to do that testing?
Right, because right now we're sort of coordinating so that eventually the goal is that we'll have one person from either Cataldo or CHA stationed at each school. Right now, we're not exactly there yet, but we are able to make calls to get the capacity where we need it, so that those tests are done.
Okay, thank you. Because it was when we first started this, before anything was happening and people were being sent out, people were like frustrated, and they got so busy at the River Green, it was taken up to 48 hours to get the results. And then if that came back negative, the problem was, the kid just missed two days of school. I have an allergy attack. So, thank you, thank you so much for that. That was one. The other one was in the parent information center. They're using Lion Bridge. I know we have family liaisons, but are they using the Lion Bridge technique to help people? If there's not a Portuguese translator there that day, they are using that?
Yes, so all of our schools, all of our staff have Lion Bridge access so that they can use it if they need it. For, since we do schedule those, those registrations or those appointments ahead of time, we can often meet the language need. So since they're not necessarily just coming into, like for example, if they were just coming to a school, then you might use Lion Bridge because you don't have somebody on hand. Whereas because we do know ahead of time if there is a language need, we can make it so that we plan accordingly and have somebody who's there live in person in order to support. But, you know, we can always fall back on Lion Bridge if we need to.
Okay, I'm not going to throw any of our schools or any staff under the bus because I wasn't there, but I did get a call, someone was trying to get their child signed up for a program and couldn't get a Portuguese speaking person to help them. And to my knowledge, this parent was at the school and there was no one there that day. I was able to track that person down, because she happens to do it at other places as well during the week. But should that parent have been offered the opportunity to speak to somebody from Lion Bridge at that point, at that point?
Yes.
I, I thought so.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to talk to me afterwards, we could definitely talk a little bit more and I could just make sure that that's broadly communicated, that everybody has the access that they need.
Right, if she had just called in, that would have been different. Probably she would have had to come to the school to do that, is that correct?
No, you can use Lion Bridge whether you're in person or over the phone. So what they'll do is if you're in person, they'll pick up the phone, they'll have Lion Bridge there and so they can put it on speaker so that you can still communicate.
So that could have happened as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And there's one more. And that is that, that, oh. When our, when our freshmen have their lanyards in their exploratory year, do those lanyards get changed by color every time they move around?
No, they will have like the freshman, freshman color. And then once they go to the, right, once they go to the 10th grade or once they enter into an academy, they'll have a different.
That's fine then, okay. And then one more thing, the parade route this year, I know it's been scaled down, is it really coming down Ferry Street?
I've actually since forgotten. We have it all mapped out with Sergeant Gaff. But I think Mr. Obramski, if he's still here, he has it written down exactly what we decided on.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll just have to keep posted. I was hoping it would be Ferry Street, because I have a nice front porch with stairs if anybody wants to come over.
And that's why they chose that route, because of you.
I was hoping, I mean, I'll have the cooler there, we'll have nice waters and sodas and so forth.
I'll be there.
That's a great question. We will get out the parade route so that everybody knows.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to ask all those questions. Thank you to my colleagues.
Okay, I'll just go down the Ross Stoughton. Ms. Lambert.
I won't belabor it. I, I just want to reiterate, thank you for pushing out the communication. I think it just makes so much of a difference when that information is going out to 1,500, 2,000 families versus them trying to find out and coming in and maybe getting a busy signal. And, and that's how kind of this information starts. And just to anybody at home, this school is amazing, these students are amazing, they're doing things that I wish would go viral. Any of you kids or students or Dinah, tell your friends, are on TikTok, start recording those and sending them out. Because so many people have said, thank goodness, camera phones weren't around when I was younger. I know a lot of parents, and I'm not dismissing it, I'm not, because I have a student in this building who comes here every day and I promised I won't speak for him. But he did tell me that I could say that he feels very safe here and everybody's very chill. So. And then the other piece, and I just want to encourage everyone, please, the library survey. Nothing could have made me happier than seeing that come out this week. When you think about libraries, it's not just about books, although I love books more than anything. It's also media literacy, and that's exactly what we're talking about here, is how, is reference information. How to find and verify information? How to differentiate between something that makes you feel emotion versus rational, you know, and that's those are the types of skills our students need to be able to navigate this world of social media. So please, when you're taking that, it leads right into these trends or, you know, I don't want to say rumors or, you know, things that kind of spread like wildfire and, and it takes some of that out. So if we're gonna, you know, we need 21st century learners to create 21st century leaders. And that's exactly what we need. So just thank you. I just want to reiterate that and please take that survey.
Ms. Murray.
Thank you, Chairman Parker. Threw you to the superintendent. My first question is kind of a easy one. The library survey, is it also in Arabic? Because you did not say that.
It is not.
Oh, is that something we may be able to look into?
We could. In fact, we actually had posted, we were trying to look for a family liaison. We actually thought we had one at one point, but we could certainly look into that, yes.
Okay, I think I want to start by letting Ms. Cardillo know that when you're on your porch, shout out to my son Finnegan, who will be playing the euphonium in the marching band and in the parade. So, if you see my little blonde glasses wearing boy with what is essentially a mini tuba, that's him. So keep an eye out. So now getting back to this idea that I think links up what Councilwoman Lambert was saying and what Councilman Marconi Almeida Barros was saying about both the fights and media literacy. We know that one of the main issues involved in this situation is obviously social media. We know that in theory, with a strong library program with a, with a lot of media in education, we can teach kids how to be responsible members of a digital community. We also know that we're not in time for that right now, and that that's not really going to fix things. And to piggyback on what I said when Dr. Wallace was here, I don't necessarily think consequences are always punitive, and I don't necessarily think that punitive is always the answer. But I know that a great deal of our parents are wondering what consequences there are for the kids who are making, participating in the social media aspect of this violence. Because it's easy to pin everything on the kids who are being violent. But the kids who are filming it and putting it out for consumption are also culpable. And I'm not necessarily saying that stringent punishment is the route that I would go here. But I, and I know that we can't talk about the specifics of individual situations, these children are minors, et cetera, et cetera. But I do think that our community would feel a little bit more comfortable if we talked a little bit about the general scope of consequences around irresponsible digital community behavior.
So there definitely are consequences, and we do, when these things happen and they're posted, we do our best and we do work with our in the cases that it's appropriate, we work with our school resource officers and EPD in order to sort of trace back the videos to where they are. We also do, you know, the, the general way we've always approached things like this, which is to talk directly to the students, right? You talk with the students, you figure out who was taking a video, who has this video, who passed it around. So there's a lot of that as well, just like the homegrown investigation versus the actual technical or technological investigation. And then depending on the severity of the of the social media posting or distribution, there are consequences. So there are some cases, for example, where it may actually be illegal for there to be something that was posted, you know, depending on what the circumstance is, in which case we do have to go one specific course that we may not have otherwise. And we would prefer to have kept school-based, you know, consequences, there are times that we have to use, you know, legal reinforcement. The other thing that we have been doing is when we do find that there has been distribution, was we have been engaging the families. So there are consequences, but I think another really important piece of this is the engagement with the families, the discussion with the families. I will say that, you know, from my experience, this is not something that our parents want. Either they, you know, they are instilling consequences at home when they find out that this stuff happens, they know that, you know, this isn't something they experienced, this isn't something they did when they were in school. And I think that they are just as concerned, mortified, you know, and, and I think that having the parent's support in these areas is really important, because they are the ones who truly do the social media regulation, truly do the device regulation in a way that we can't necessarily. Yes, exactly. And so we really do try to engage the families, talk with them about what happened, why, you know, it's unacceptable, most of the time, it's not a very long, they clearly understand and are concerned and want to know how we even suggest they, they support their children and kind of pulling back from these, these things. And I will say, you know, the social media, I really do have to say, not just, not just about the, you know, the videoing and posting, but just the amount of pressure that social media puts on our children is really something that I am, am sort of baffled by. And I, I do feel a lot of empathy for our students and do feel that this is an important time to be engaging them in education, in, you know, conversations, because once they leave our doors, you know, we want them to be responsible adults moving forward and we want them to not, you know, fall victim to or be perpetrators of this kind of behavior. And it, it really is hard and it's especially difficult when they are coming out of a time when they've spent a lot of time at home and social media was their main outlet. Exactly, exactly. And so being able to kind of transition back into human interaction, into, you know, what is appropriate and to how to actually, you know, have these conversations, conflict resolution that isn't through social media, that isn't through text. You know, these are things that are really important right now when we need the entire community's support and helping our students, because I really, and when I say helping, that's what I mean, is that we really need to support them, because this is something we never had to deal with and thank goodness we didn't, because it really does put an enormous amount of pressure on on students at a time when there's already an enormous amount of pressure and influence and, you know, things that they are trying to balance.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Madam Superintendent. So on the plan, I think the use of social media like education was going to be like informed. So how do you plan on necessarily like doing that?
So we actually are going to be utilizing a, we've talked with a couple of consulting groups that are going to support us as well as, you know, there are different trainings that like the Attorney General's Office and other places do. So we are tapping into some of our local resources and planning to do it during our intervention blocks. So we think that that's a good time during the day when all of our staff can kind of support with sort of the same messaging, same unit. So what we're trying to determine now is, is just what is the best way, like is it to have one group that is sort of training the trainer model and talking with the teachers, is it somebody who's doing a webinar, coming to our school, or is it all of the above? Which is right now is what it seems like. We need to tackle this from multiple different angles. So we need to make sure we're having these conversations, having these pieces of education and, you know, it's not just going to be a one and done type thing.
Yeah, I think it would be a very good start in addition to the communication, because social media, like, once something gets on it, like it's fairly quickly. So if you, you know, don't take that action to really like communicate it, then, you know, like whether it's true or false, like it's, it's going to be like out there, you know. So yeah, I'm really appreciated that you're, you know, taking those extra steps and helping the students. And yeah, thank you.
Mr. Federici?
I just want to just thank everyone who gives positive attitude, because whether it was when a lot of us older members were in high school or today's present day, I've always seen that the 5% of negativity always overshadows the 95% of the good things that happens in schools. And these kids do a great job. We've seen it tonight through Mr. Wallace, Ms. Puleo, Mr. Murray, our student, Ms. Mercy and Dinah, our own student rep, they just do great things. And those things are the things that need to be put out there. Like I said, it's just a shame that that little 5% Like I said, it's just a shame that that little 5% overshadows all the good things these kids do. So I just want to commend the school and everything that you guys do for these kids because it, I've talked to a lot of them. I used to do the Kids in the Health Academy and they were great. They were all, they all felt safe and they were just appreciative of everything the school does. So keep up the good work. And it's that 95% that we do great is great things for these kids and it shows. Thank you.
So my comments would be, yes, we're talking about, you know, children and social media, but we also need some more responsibility from the adult community too. You know, perpetuate, you know, the rumors or take advantage of a child situation. And that's wrong, right? We talk about consequences, you know, as far as sharing social media within the school building, we have got children up to 22 years old. Depending on the content of the material, you know, the consequences are different if you're 14 versus you're 18. And that needs to be understood too. But with that, I did have the opportunity to attend one meeting last week. And I left the meeting and I says, okay, that's it. I have to come back here regarding the meetings anyway. I saw great collaboration amongst central administration, the high school leadership team, the SROs, the department ads and the teachers. I'm confident that, you know, we've got the staff that'll meet this challenge. And let's not forget the staff too has gone through a very tumultuous period the last two years. They've adapted, they've reacted, you know? And they're coming out of something completely different also too, just as the kids are. We need to recognize that and lend our support to them. But the staff here is confident. You know, to the families at home, every day that teacher interacts with your child, they get to know that child better and they're going to be able to read them and know when they're coming in and maybe having the potential for an off day and they're going to be able to intercede. So the problem, the goal is not to break up the fights. The goal is to, you know, stop them, deescalate them. And also as students and staff spend more time with each other, there's going to be more staff, I'm sorry, more more trust and that to be able to confide in each other when when something's potentially going to happen. So with that, last thing is that I've had the opportunity to, because I've been working remotely, to observe the lunches during the day on some beautiful days. Is this, I know it was initially done for social distancing reasons. Thank you. Is any talk of extending that throughout the school year?
Yes. In fact, I think that the city is supporting us because a lot of that is their property is supporting us with picnic tables and some places where the students can eat year round. You know, I know it gets cold here, but I've actually spoken to several people who had outdoor lunch. You know, I grew up in Tennessee, so we didn't have to deal with this. And they said that, you know, people did outdoor lunch and they still went out, the students went out when it was snowing. So I think we are going to be extending it. I think it has been really great and it's nice for them to get fresh air during the day. I like going out during lunch duty to be able to get that fresh air too. So I, we are definitely extending it.
And and I will end with saying that, you know, the students and their custodian staff has done a great job in keeping that that area clean. So thank you. Any other questions regarding the superintendent update? Okay, let's move on to the next piece of business, please.
Thank you.
If you forgot, it's number three.
It is number three. Red Sox, here we come. All right. Item number three is the Pearl Harbor trip update from the music department. I respectfully request we invite Mr. Saichara Saichara and Ms. Yeva, Yeva, oh my gosh, to provide us with an update on the EHS Music Department's trip to Hawaii. As you know, the Everett High School Music Department and our musicians have been invited to represent Massachusetts on December 7th at the 80th Pearl Harbor commemoration event in Hawaii. It has been quite some time since we discussed and you all approved this trip. And I just wanted to make sure that you all had the pertinent information before we proceed regarding the procedures and contingencies that are going to be required on a trip of this nature. For example, I just found out that the tape that today, that a group that was intended to be traveling to Hawaii from Everett is no longer going to be attending. And so I want to be fully transparent with, you know, what this may look like if students are testing before they get on a plane. What are the contingency plans there? Because they do need to test to get on a plane. And then what happens if they test positive? They'd have to stay in Hawaii. I'm sure they wouldn't complain, but who's staying with them, those kinds of things. So I really want to make sure that everybody here really understands the implications of this. And if it is something that we do need to reconsider or just revisit, well, we're revisiting it now, but I do want us to be able to have an open and honest conversation about our level of comfortability with this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded by Mrs. Saichara to appear in front of us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? So moved. I'm welcome, Mrs. Saichara.
Thank you so much for having me, Mr. Parker, Superintendent Taliyani. I appreciate the time, members of the community, excuse me, school committee. I'm here on behalf of Mr. O'Brien, who had a previous engagement this evening. So I'm just happy to be here. I thank you for your time. I'll try to be as thorough as possible, but also as expedient as I can. Just to let you guys know, our competitive season is in full swing. You guys probably heard the band out just halfway through the meeting doing run-throughs upon run-throughs. They just eclipsed their biggest competitor this past weekend, came to got their first big, excuse me, their first first place win of the season. So we're sliding right into finals. Hopefully you guys can come out and see the band at some point, whether it's locally here, just at rehearsal, or our next couple of shows are in Dartmouth this weekend and next week, the following weekend in Reading for the big championship. So the kids are very, very excited. Just wanted to share this past weekend, they won best music and best percussion in the show. So they're just all very, very hyped up and riding the, riding the wave. Mr. O'Brien wanted me to share that as far as the Hawaii trip is concerned, from our conversations with all the pieces involved, that we are full steam ahead. That's a direct quote from him. We have a total of 75 people going. That's 65 students and 10 staff chaperones. The trip is still scheduled to leave, as was stated before, on the morning of December 3rd with an overnight return flight, red eye, December 8th into the 9th. And all students and staff will be on the same flight, both directions, Hawaiian Airlines on the way to Honolulu. And on the way back, there's a stopover in LAX coming. We'll return here in the morning of the 9th. What you guys are probably most interested in hearing are the financial updates. All the major payments, payments have been made up to this point on time. We have one remaining payment left to be fulfilled by November the 1st. The final cost breakdown for each person for the trip was $2,123. On top of that, each student and staff member also paid a total of $250 each for the purpose of additional insurance, transportation of our equipment and luggage, of course, on both flights back and forth. And that money will also serve to provide instrument rentals once we're there in Hawaii. It's very challenging to bring things like marimbas, vibraphones, drum sets, timpani, those are not things we could store under a plane. So Music Collaborations is helping us to coordinate that. We're, we just were talking about it this past Friday. We're also now just in the process of beginning organizing the bus transportation from here to Logan Airport and then back the morning that we return. So it's a total of $14,490 in insurance costs. The overall total for the trip was 2,000, excuse me, $204,225. And we've raised about 18, just over $18,000 from the students. And of course, just around $5,000 in donations, small or large, from all different sources. I'm sure Mrs. Yeva or Mr. O'Brien could detail who those all came from. I don't have that information. So we are fully financially prepared to follow through with everything should it all go according to plan. The more important topics of the COVID updates, I'll give you as much as I know. In the past month, Hawaii did issue some new restrictions based on a spike they had in cases over in September. All those restrictions are set to be lifted by December 1st. So that's where we're operating with a little bit more certainty than we had when things were first put in place. The numbers are dropping consistently and we've had full confirmation from both Music Celebrations, the company running the trip, and the host of the official ceremony that's going on at the USS Missouri, that everything is still scheduled to go 100% according to plan. The adjustments that are going to be made are things on our itinerary, things that maybe will not happen in the same sightseeing excursions or, you know, the fun stuff that the kids will be experiencing when they're on the, on the trip. But the main events are still fully a go and we're doing our best to make sure that we have a, as much of a bubble around the kids and the staff once we're out there and once the trip is in motion. Most of the events and excursions that are still in place are set to take place outdoors. You know, we're in in paradise, so I'm expecting to be as as far, as much outside as we possibly can, weather permitting. And any of the events that do take place, museums or restaurants where the kids might be going to, of course, they're going to be following mask policies and whatever policies they're expected to follow here in the building. At this point in the timeline, the cancellation, if it were on our behalf, meaning, you know, the people here in this room, not myself, we would lose 50% of the money that has been paid in total. So that's roughly $100,000. If Music Celebrations does decide to cancel the event based on whatever might come up in the next, you know, several weeks or months, we would get a full refund of the money with the exception of the $15,000 initial deposit. As of yesterday on the 17th, we have just over 95% of our students and staff confirmed to be vaccinated with their cards provided to myself and Mrs. Yeva and Mr. O'Brien. We're the only ones who have that information. And they've been very eager to offer that information, whether it's pride or just wanting to be excited about going on the trip. They're very happy to share. There are many few people who have not yet submitted that information, have at least made arrangements with Mrs. Yeva to have a conversation about it and deal about, start to deal with the alternative, which requires them to get tested within 72 hours of their travel, both there to Honolulu and back to Boston once we're out there. Those same people are going to be required to be tested every 48 hours once we're on the ground in Honolulu. And that is something we're coordinating still with musical celebrations as far as where those things will take place, whether it's at the hotel or at a clinic somewhere on the island. If any students or staff test positive before the trip, unfortunately, they will just be unable to come with us. It's just a very solid line that we can't cross. If someone tests positive within that 72 hours, we're not going to chance it. Where am I at? Of course, due to the mandatory quarantine, if someone does test positive while we were there in Hawaii, they'll have to stay until the two weeks are up or the CDC guidelines suggest that they're free to travel safely. So if it's a male or female student, it'll be either Mr. O'Brien or Mrs. Yeva, who will stay there with those students. If it's an adult staff person, they're free to stay there on their own and quarantine until that that period has elapsed. And most, most importantly, the premium insurance plan that we've paid for and gone through the process of acquiring is going to cover the two-week contingency plan, whether it's medical expenses or the the cost of the hotel for those people to stay and anything else of that nature. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I can answer on top of that information. But I thank you for your time and hope to hear anything you guys have to offer.
Ms. Murray.
Thank you for coming. And I just have a couple of questions about supervision. So if my math is correct, it's seven to eight kids per chaperone. Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
And will the kids be assigned to a chaperone for the time that they're away so that they always have the same touch person? And they have a relationship with that person?
We, we have not yet like solidified which list of students will be with which specific staff person. But we've had conversations about having those kinds of things in place, for sure. I think, you know, our, all of our students are very well acquainted with everybody on our staff. We see our kids day in and day out. You know, the kids are in the bandroom like it's Grand Central Station. So the personal relationships that we have are very thorough on every, with every staff person that we have. Whether it's, you know, so from a familiarity standpoint, the kids are going to know who to look out for and vice versa.
I just meant along the lines of, I think for kids, it's easier if they know this child belongs to this adult.
Sure.
Know who their primary touchstone is when they're going so far away from home, if that makes sense?
Absolutely. I think that's something we can definitely incorporate into our planning process.
And they'll be fully supervised regardless of the outside event, whether it has to do with their actual performance or, like you said, chances for them to go to museums or restaurants or things like that. They'll always be with an adult, right?
Yes, I think the the intent is that we're going to try to keep everything as close as possible, given the current circumstances. You know, if it were a different time, we'd let them walk up and down Waikiki or let them, you know, view the museums themselves. I think we're going to try to stay as one big tight unit as much as possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for your presentation. I'm actually part of the group that was going to Hawaii, but no longer going. Because I believe that the things that are put in place by the governor there because of COVID, those will not allow a larger group like us. I think we're planning about 100 people. I think right now you can only do, if you do an indoor event, or at least until December 1st, correct? You can do up to 25 people, but has to, I think, outside 25, inside 10, something like that. I know that Senator DeDomenico, who was organizing the group, we are all very sad they were not going to be able to do it. The, the senator actually brought an earmark, about $200,000, President, for, took over with the trip. So thank you, Senator DeDomenico, for that. Are there any, so we would be the, well, we hopefully will be the big star there. But there are other bands and to my knowledge, those bands canceled the participation at the event. Do you have any knowledge of that?
Yes, there, there were about nine bands that were planning to go and seven of them have chosen not to go. Whether through their state restrictions or whatever it might be, I haven't been a part of those conversations. I do know that there is one large dance group from Texas still going on the trip. And they've since recruited at least one group from Hawaii that will be there representing in addition to us. Since all of those cancellations have happened, Mr. O'Brien, Mrs. Yeva, the people at the company who are running the trip have made as many core, as much coordination with Colonel Lang, who is the conductor running the event at the USS Missouri to incorporate the program that the kids have been working on since June, May or June into the actual program that's going to be played on the USS Missouri. So the music that, you know, I personally have arranged and our other arranger will be the music played at the event in addition to a few other things that, you know, Colonel Lang would like us to play Stars and Stripes Forever, some patriotic medley pieces, things like that. So they are still planning to have a significant group of people, maybe not as large as they have done in years past. From what I understand, what Mr. O'Brien has told me, you know, it's better for them that they can space everybody out on the pier. You know, the kids don't actually get to go onto the deck of the Missouri during the performance and during the ceremony itself. It's just, you know, just across the gangplank. So they can space everybody out and have the kind of production that they are used to running there. So yes, many groups have chosen not to go. We are just as committed as we were beforehand to making sure that the kids have something that they've been looking forward to. You know, if it's the decision of the people here to make a change to that, that's up to all of you to decide. But you know, we're, we're going through as steadfastly as we possibly can.
I believe there was some conversation with Senator DeDomenico for the possibility of if in case that we are not going, which I believe, I can't guarantee this, but what I've heard is that, not through rumors, which is very common in this place. But I believe President Biden has canceled his appearance as well to the event. Is that correct? I'm sure, have you heard the same?
Yes, I, that was what I was told just through Mr. O'Brien and his meetings with Senator DeDomenico.
And there was some conversation that the senator might be able to perhaps bring the kids to another location in case that the trip didn't happen. Is there any an update on that, those conversations or not?
I don't think we've had any secondary conversations about it. Mrs. Yeva may be able to speak a little further on that, but the last update that I heard of is that because the event is still going forward from both sides of the organizations running the, the trip are going on, that that is at least sufficient for us at the time being. If something were to get canceled or to be changed, you know, they, they're, they're willing to work with us to make some kind of backup scenario if that's the case. you know, they, they're, they're willing to work with us to make some kind of backup scenario, if that's the case that comes to be.
Right. And last, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I, I'm delighted that our kids are going to Hawaii. That's just amazing. First of all, congratulations on the most recent winning, because they've, they are award-winning already. So congratulations. I'm very excited that they are going. However, I am concerned for their, you know, not only for them, but our staff as well, everyone's health. What I've read through the Hawaiian news is that the situation, at least right now, is not that great. I hope it will improve. But hospitals are overtaking and ICUs are filled. So I was concerned with that. I, I don't think that we should cancel the trip at this moment, but I think we should keep an eye on it. I would rather lose money, personally, I would rather lose money and have all of our kids and staff health and, you know, in good health than just take the risk of going if something happens. Again, I don't think we should cancel the trip at this moment, but as they say, we should take under advisement that we should perhaps keep an eye on it. And maybe if, you know, we are getting to November, maybe a month before we board, if the situation continues to be the same as it is in Hawaii right now, we should look at that and perhaps reconsider it. So that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you too, Mr. Sacheta. My, my biggest concern is the timing coming right after the Thanksgiving holiday, and that's kind of when we saw the peak here. But with the vaccination rate, hopefully, you know, everyone will, I know breakthrough cases happen. So that, that's my only thought process is it's just a few weeks before. But up until that point, until we kind of see what that looks like, I, I would agree with Mr. O'Brien, you know, full steam ahead, and please let us know if, how that can be viewed, and perhaps, Superintendent, we could have a viewing here, because I know many of us were excited to cheer on the band and support them and such a, I mean, it's, it's a moment for our country as well as the students and for them to be a part of that. And, you know, someone, I grew up with the Hawaiian Royal Band, and, you know, I was so excited for them to be able to take part in, at commemoration and the anniversary. So, you know, I will do whatever we can to support you. And again, if we can look at something, maybe, maybe the auditorium here, we can have a viewing for those folks that couldn't attend and the families to be able to watch that. And I think it'll be a special moment, and aloha.
Yeah, of course, it would be our privilege to share with as many people as we possibly can. I know members of my family are still planning to go, members of the band, their parents, some of them are going, not many, but just a few. So I know at the very least, there'll be some Facebook live streams or, you know, an unofficial official rendering of whatever that we're doing over there. I know that's something that I've asked an awful lot about, of how that will be showcased with the parents of the students who can't go, first and foremost, and then, of course, with everybody here and the rest of the community will be happy to facilitate as whatever we can.
Any questions for your guest? Superintendent?
I actually have, just to clarify for the committee. So you mentioned that we would get $2,700 to cover the cost if a student was required to stay in Hawaii due to testing positive. We would just get the $2,700 for that student, or would we also get it for a chaperone or somebody additional who needed to stay?
That's a great question. If it were more than one person or a staff person, the, the insurance amount is the same, correct?
So sorry, I mean, like, will, so if a student tests positive, the chaperone has to stay with them, who is most likely not tested positive. But my understanding is that we would not receive 27, like, they would not get that money back for that chaperone. Would that would stay? That person would have to stay at our expense.
At their cost. So if you or Mr. O'Brien have to stay, it's at your cost or is the insurance?
On the insurance. And so we would get an additional 2,700?
Correct.
Okay. And what happens when you mentioned that if they test positive on our end before going to Hawaii, do they get their money back?
They do not.
And then, sorry, you had also stated that we would lose 100,000 if we pull out now. I was trying to see on the policy where that's listed. Where, where exactly is that? That we only get 50% after a certain date passes?
Yes, it's all based on data. After the, so we're in the current period of 50%. Once it reaches November 1st, it reaches 100%. I have the actual documentation downstairs on my desk, but, and I'm, I'm happy to share all the information I've shared tonight and the, you know, the contracts that Mr. O'Brien shared with me, you know, in his folder that he left for me. I just sort of took my laptop and that's all I came up with. I'm so sorry.
No, that's all right.
Okay.
Ms. Murray, my mic was muted.
Okay. I just want to reiterate that while I share my colleagues' concerns about COVID, and of course, that's the primary concern. As a parent of a kid who in a couple of years would have been going on the trip with you, he's only in seventh grade now, but theoretically, had this happened in a few years, he'd be going with you. And as an educator who've brought kids a significant distance on field trips, we went to Europe, we went to a few other places. I'd like to hear some more shoring up of the plan for how kids are going to be supervised and, you know, just, just for the sake of our parents to feel at ease, knowing that their children are going so far away and the consequences of getting lost or separated from your group, or getting ill, or not knowing where to go to, or or how to just traverse a foreign place. I think that all of us would feel a lot better if we felt like the things we can control are really controlled, so that we can make allowances for the things we can't control, if that makes sense.
Of course. I would just also share that myself, Mrs. Yeba, Mr. O'Brien, we've taken the band on, at this point, countless opportunities, just as you've mentioned, whether it's to the WGI championships out in Dayton or San Diego, or wherever they host it. You know, we're constantly traveling with these kids and are very well-versed in what works and what doesn't work. So while not every single ironed-out detail is in place for what that looks like in Pearl Harbor, specifically to Hawaii, you know, we're very well-versed in, you know, what are the nighttime policies? You know, we put marks on the door and tape them in so that we know that they haven't left the room at nighttime. I know it seems a little bit crazy, but it's the things that they know for peace of mind. On top of that, and not that this is something that we can really police, but we're talking about the, the highest flyers in the entire school system. Our kids, we just were talking to them this afternoon, you know, the top 10 of the senior class is all band kids. So we're talking about kids who are very, very responsible, sometimes more responsible than I am. You know, they're coming up with ideas for the schedule before I can even write it down on paper to give to them. So we're talking about an achievement level where these kids want to achieve beyond. So when we give them some kind of stipulations or standards to follow, they're always, you know, right there in line. That's not to say that there aren't very young kids, you know, our freshmen, some eighth graders. I don't think we have any sixth or seventh graders going, but they are so eager to follow in the footsteps of these fantastic role models that we have. As far as the things on the ground, you know, our staff is made of people who are also members of, former members of our band program, myself included. So they're used to the same process that we've gone through over and over again, and see that it works just as effectively as it was for them. You know, they always got from place A to place B and did so under the supervision of people like Mrs. Yeba and Mr. O'Brien, and it's just something that becomes an automatic knee-jerk reaction to anything that might go wrong. You know, of course, there's the unspoken of things that can go wrong that we can never plan for. But we have a system down, and we're, we're happy to, by the time we're ready to leave for the trip, present those things to you in much more full detail.
I really appreciate that level of detail, honestly. I think when you're, and I, and I certainly didn't mean to offend you or suggest that you didn't know what you were doing, but I think when you have practiced doing something, your level of, of understanding of that action, like bringing kids a far distance, there are things that in your mind seem obvious, like taping the doors, nighttime procedures, things like that, that to the viewing audience and the members of the committee, just hearing thoughts and ideas like that articulated sets a tone of relief, because at least we know that we can't control COVID. We can't control, you know, everything that happens when our kids are an ocean away. But at least we know that the adults that are with them and are caring for them have strategies and things in their toolkit that are going to help to keep our kids safe. So I really appreciate your articulation of that, because I think it's very helpful for me as a parent, and I'm sure it's helpful to parents that are listening.
Of course, thank you.
Ms. Cadello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the chair to Mrs. Sacheta. One question. Earlier, you said the cost was $21.23 per person. Then you mentioned the $250 for insurance, and then you went on to speak of the $14,494, the equipment insurance. That $250, is that per person for their flight, for their coach, for the whole package?
No, not for the whole package. What Senator, Senator DiDomenico provided covered the majority of the cost of the trip. The things that we wanted to supplement were costs that were not rolled into that sort of information.
I mean, the insurance. I'm specifically speaking, the $250 each person for insurance. That per person, that part wasn't for the equipment, correct? That was for the, the actual person that's flying and going to Hawaii?
It, it's a little bit of both. You know, we, we have bought extra insurance for any case scenario. So a portion of that $250 does go to insurance, and on top of that, we are also trying to pay for the equipment to travel with us that we can.
When I was getting it, as you said, if somebody had to cancel like a week before, they wouldn't get any money back, so that insurance policy would not kick in for somebody that was, God forbid, sick with COVID? Okay. And I, I think that's important, because even for their parents to know or guardians what's covered in that insurance that was purchased, because usually that is purchased at the time of purchasing the package or the flights and so forth. And even if they had a voucher to use within a year, rather than losing everything, that would seem silly, like why would you get insurance if you weren't covered at all? And I mean, just for the sake of not wanting to go is a different story, but I don't need to know that, but I think people that are flying there, parents that are going, and even the children, students whose parents aren't able to make it, should know what the coverage is on that, so that if there is an instance, they're fully aware of it. Okay, I appreciate that. And thank you for your presentation. It was very informative tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows?
Mr. Chairman, thank you quickly, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your presentation. Can we, and that goes to the superintendent, can we have an additional update before this trip? Maybe Mrs. Chairman can come back and tell us, you know, the governor really lift the ban or thinks in hospitals are better, all the kids, everything is all set. So can we have an additional update before, perhaps before the, well, of course, before the trip? Maybe in our first or second meeting in November? I don't know. It's up to you, Superintendent, but I'd like to have, if we may, and, and a final update on this trip before it happens.
Absolutely. In fact, we'll, we'll see what, maybe we want to have it for the next two, because that's before the trip happens. So I'm sure we could just, even if it's just a short update for both meetings.
And if all goes well, it'd be a great way to send them off. Okay, any other questions of our guest? Motion made, seconded, excuse the customary thanks. Thank you, Mrs. Sacheta.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So much.
All right. Thank you so much. So on to item number four, which is the Chelsea Public Schools evacuation plan update. So this has been an ongoing request that we have approved by the Chelsea Public Schools to use Everett High School in the rare event that this neighboring district had to evacuate students from any of its buildings. This is a request that we've agreed to and approved for the past five to six years, so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of this plan. For those wondering, this is not a reciprocal arrangement. As the old Everett High School on Broadway is where we would send our students in the case of evacuation.
So make a motion to approve the plan as is detailed in the letter. There are second, send it to us.
Okay, motions are made and seconded for favorable action on item number four. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all's in favor? No? Hearing none, motion carries. We have approved the evacuation plan.
Item number five is to request approval for the Cambridge Health Alliance to use space inside Everett High School to operate a youth training program. So the CHA is asking to use space at Everett High for two hours on Mondays, just on January 24th, 2022. This is part of the Photo Voice Project, which is being funded by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, and the Office of Problem Gambling Services. It is being implemented by the CHA in Everett, Malden, and Somerville. So the project has three goals, which is to support healthy youth lifestyles that are incompatible with underage or problem gambling, to focus on communities experiencing racial and ethnic health disparities, and to empower our youth to encourage healthy behaviors that are incompatible with problem or underage gambling throughout their community. So the youth training consists of 16 interactive lessons. The training seeks to build skills in advocacy and photography and provides underage gambling education and health risk-taking. The project accumulates in a community-wide presentation of the photographs and messages youth develop in order to raise the awareness for their peers, caretakers, and community to prevent underage gambling. And if accepted, we are approved, we look forward to supporting CHA in this effort.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action, item number five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move, the ayes have it. Next item, please.
Thank you. So item number six is to request approval for the Everett Kiwanis Club to host its meetings at Everett High School. The Everett Kiwanis Club has been having its meetings at EHS since the school opened. They meet every Tuesday during the school year from 12:15 to approximately 1:30 PM. Unfortunately, with the lack of space at EHS, and in order to meet our Chapter 74 requirements, we must now use the seating area in culinary arts as a classroom. So we've offered for Kiwanis to either have the meetings after school or move them to Vion Street. However, if possible, I would like to recommend approval of this general request so that we can move forward with planning with Kiwanis, either to get them an alternative space in the high school or to potentially do it at a different time.
So moved.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to grant the approval of the Everett Kiwanis Club to return to its meetings at their Everett High School. Any questions, comments? Seeing no hands, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Welcome back, Kiwanis.
Thank you. So item number seven is to request approval of an MOU between EPS and the EPD for School Resource Officers. However, I am respectfully requesting that we lay this on the table until the next meeting, as I would like to invite Chief Maisy to come and, and potentially even the School Resource Officers to answer any questions.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to lay on the table. Ms. Cadello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By request of our colleague Cynthia Sonny, who could not make it due to her recovery from surgery. By request of our colleague Cynthia Sani, who could not make it due to her recovery from surgery, she did ask either the chair or I to read this. She says, "I am in support of whatever measures we need to make to make our schools safe for our children, teachers, and staff. Whatever measure we deem necessary, we need to take. We need to protect and make everyone feel safe. You have my complete support." Thank you, Cynthia Sani. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. On the motion, on the motion to lay on the table, any questions, comments? So if I came from the chair, Madam Superintendent, so therefore, let's remember, understanding what the SROs means, the SROs will continue in our, part of the fabric of the Everett School District.
Absolutely. And in fact, we, this is a MOU that we've approved over the years. So even if we do not approve it right at this moment, we are still under the MOU from previously. So there will be no gap in support or services. But yes, that is the memorandum of agreement and it is mostly the same language as it was previously. There have been some updates based on some, you know, updates to police policy, which is why I think that would be better for Chief Maisy or Captain Landry to speak to.
Okay.
Motion postponed till the next meeting?
Motion been made and seconded to postpone till the next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved? I'm sorry, opposed? The ayes have it. If postponed till the next meeting.
Thank you. And the last item under this Roman numeral is eight, which is request to establish a scholarship in memory of the late Paul Richard Burkhart. This request was submitted by Vincent Saratori from Heritage Wealth Management on behalf of Mr. Burkhart, a lifelong Everett resident who passed away in February of 2021 at the age of 85. The Burkhart family wants to grant a scholarship in the amount of $1,000 to a graduating senior of the Everett High School class of 2022. Mr. Burkhart graduated from EHS in 1955, served in the US Navy, and worked for the US Postal Service. He loved Everett and its residents, and it will be our honor to carry on his legacy by presenting this scholarship to a deserving EHS grad of the class of 2022.
Cause to approve and send a letter of thanks to the Burkhart family?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for favorable action on accepting the scholarship and sending another thanks to the Burkhart family. On the motion, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you so much. So on to Roman numeral six, which are items submitted by school committee members. Item number one is an update on the roofs of the Webster School and the Webster School Extension, which was submitted by Chairman Parker. If you like, you just.
Yeah.
Okay. So in late May of 2021, the Everett Public School submitted a request to the Massachusetts School Building Commission, or MSBA, for a new roof on the modular units and the main building at the Webster School. On August 26th, the MSBA visited the school and reviewed the roof conditions. That same day, the Everett Public School was notified via email that the MSBA does not cover the cost of repairs or replacement on modular units of the schools. So they still do cover it for the main building. Mr. Obramsky did inform Mayor Carlo Di Maria, Chief of Staff, and the Chief Financial Officer of the city that the MSBA will not be covering that particular cost but would cover the cost of the roof of the building. And the City Hall has also been involved in the meetings that we've had with the MSBA. The MSBA does have a meeting of the board scheduled for October 27th. The agenda has not yet been finalized, but they will let us know if the roof at the Webster School on the main building will be on the agenda on that date, and then we will provide you with an update accordingly. And so hopefully, we will be on that agenda. In regard to the Webster School Extension, the roof has been replaced over the section of classrooms we use, and we are no longer experiencing any leaks. So this new roof replacement was completed about two weeks ago. However, we are still in the process of reparations to the classrooms ordering carpets, which are on back order, things like that. So there are still some reparations that need to be done to the classrooms that we used, but the roof itself is fixed.
Okay. Any other questions on the matter? Just from the chair, there was talk about replacing, I don't know, the heating and the cooling units on top of the Webster School to tune of about a quarter of a million dollars. And the recommendation was to do that when we replace the roof. If we're successful in getting the funding, are we in a position to do both those projects?
Yes.
Okay, right. Okay. Any other questions? All of us, a motion to refer back to sponsor?
A move.
The motion made and seconded to refer back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Number two, please.
Number two is the alleged open meeting law violation submitted by Mr. Steven Fitzgerald dated October 4th, 2021, and this was submitted by Chairman Parker.
Okay, all of you received the communication from Mr. Fitzgerald on his most recent alleged open meeting violation, where the, the agenda was stamped covering the date. I would just ask, as we have done in the past, to refer this matter to myself and Ms. Canty, and we'll respond accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. The motion made and seconded to refer this matter to myself and Ms. Canty. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? So moved.
Item number three is voting for Massachusetts Association of School Committees 2021 Resolutions, and this was submitted by Chairman Parker.
Okay, so all of you have a copy of the resolutions that had to be voted for in November. I'll be a delegate. Ms. Lambert's an alternate, bring your lampshade. And so we'll take a voice vote on each of these resolutions, of which I will then in turn, as a delegate, you know, representing the Everett School District, my vote will be what we take tonight. So I think you've all had a chance to read, you know, the detail. For the sake of time, I'm just going to read off. Sure.
I believe you all muted.
Thank you. Resolution seven is incredibly important because it's about receivership districts like Lawrence, and it's about returning school to their communities rather than having Desi take over. And this is a long time coming. When Desi started doing takeovers of entire schools and then entire districts, teachers were sort of the canaries in the coal mine, and we were the first ones to say, hey, wait a minute. You know, you're taking over these schools and you're putting in these private companies to run these schools? And when these private companies aren't showing any sort of movement in the direction that you're promising it will, what are the consequences? And the answer has been none. The answer has been none for years and years and years. And finally, the answer from MASIC is to say enough is enough. And it's time for communities, parents, school committees, and faculties to have control over their own schools again and getting out of this centralized, Desi-controlled world. So I just want to say that this resolution in particular was a long time coming. I'm super proud to be on a school committee during a time when we can take this vote. And I really strongly encourage all of us to support our neighbors who have been in receivership for a very long time. Thank you.
Yeah, and I believe those three communities as they stand are Lawrence, Holyoke, and Southbridge. Okay, so with that, I'll just read the title of the resolution. We'll take a voice vote and then move on to the next one. So resolution number one, dedicated funding for school-based clinics and services as sponsored by the Framingham School Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'll be voting yes on resolution number one. Number two, homework gap and Wi-Fi internet access sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so therefore we'll be voting yes on that one, too. Resolution number three, idea for Funding Act. I think this goes hand in hand with our Mercy's presentation earlier. So just idea is an acronym that stands for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So what then I ask, all those in favor on resolution number three?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you for voting yes. Resolution number four is recess, sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors. What does that mean to the folks at home? There's a couple of bills at the State House with the Senate and the House that want recess to be at least 20 minutes of recess daily for each kid. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll be voting yes on that one. Resolution number five is zero tolerance policies. Again, further to, you know, Everett, and we've heard about things tonight. And there are a couple of current bills, which is Senate 344 and House 664. Lead sponsors are Senator Jalen and Representative Machino respectively. So on the zero tolerance policy as sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Be voting yes on that one, too. I'm sure this one is near and dear to Ms. Murray's heart. Resolution number six, alternate AMCAST, sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors, which is basically calling for a panel to review the current high-stakes testing in this state.
And I'm sure the superintendent likes that, too.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor of supporting resolution number six?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Be voting yes on that one. Thank you. Resolution number seven is explained by my colleague, Ms. Murray, school committees in receivership, which is also submitted by the MASC Board of Directors. And it basically talks about communities taking back their school districts as opposed to going into receivership and basically be run by a dictator. So on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Opposed? Thank you. We're voting yes on that one. Item number eight, electric school buses sponsored by the MASC Resolutions Committee. They're going to petition the Congress for $30 billion to make buses greater. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And resolution number nine, prohibiting the use of Native American mascots as sponsored by the MASC Board of Directors. Again, there's a current Senate bill, S294. So all those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So moved. Oh, and by the way, one of the lead sponsors on the recess is Dr. John Santiago, representative of, I believe he's Boston. So, okay, so ladies and gentlemen, I'll be voting yes on everything. Thank you for making my job easier and participating. So that finishes off the items submitted by school committee members.
Yes, so on to Roman numeral eight, which is bills and payroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,466,948.45.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,466,948.45. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Aberzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Chairman Parker? Yes, in the affirmative, zero to negative, you have approved the motion. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,466,948.45.
Second.
Okay, great. The motion is made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the total amount of $1,466,948.45. Roll call vote, please. Mr. O'Connor? Mr. Aberzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Cardello. Ms. Cardello, sorry. Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Chairman Parker? Yes, in the affirmative, zero to negative, you have motion carries to pay bills and payrolls. Ladies and gentlemen, your pleasure?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion made and seconded for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you and have a good night. Meeting's over.